I open this session of the Upshur County Commission. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Jackie, you're so kind as to read the minutes, so I think we have two. I have a special meeting and round the regular. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the Courthouse on next Thursday, October 22, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutwright called the meeting to order. Presser more Terry Cutwright Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Karen Wallace County Administrator, Tabitha Perry Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline Deng Clark or Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, all non-motions passed unanimously and last otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of October 22, 2015, with typographical corrections. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized Terry Cutwright to sign the American Fidelity Assurance Company Adoption Agreement for amended and restated Section 125 Flexible Benefits Plan. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved the bylaws for the James W. Curry Library and Park Advisory Board, which were approved by the Board of September 23, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved the reappointment of Philip Petroski as member of the Adrian Public Service District Board of Directors as recommended by Nina Moore, Adrian PSD Manager. Term expiration is October 31, 2021. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved the resignation of Virgil Miller as Chief Deputy of the Upshur County Sheriff's Department, effective November 6, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved the employment of Virgil Miller as part-time paysay for the 26 Judicial Circuit Community Corrections, effective November 15, 2015, at the rate of $10.07 per hour. Mr. Miller will work 1,489 hours per year. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved Casey Irving as volunteer for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission entered executive session at 9:20 a.m. per West Virginia Code 6-9-A dash 4 to discuss personnel issues concerning Carla Waldo, VIPP facilitator and parent educator, to discuss her position with the 26 Judicial Circuit Community Corrections. Presser more Terry Cutwright, Troy Brady, Karen Wallace, Tabitha Perry, Rodney Rollinson. The Commission returned to open session at 9:50 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Terry Cutwright reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from Terry Joe Vett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, to guide Derry Coe. In closing, the completed road name for removal petition and corrected copy of the proof of fiscal address application. Two, correspondence from David Kaufman, Sheriff of Upshur County, announcing an hourly wage increase of $1 per hour for Sharon Hostel, effective Sunday, November 1, 2015, from $11.07 per hour to $12.07 per hour. Three, correspondence from David Kaufman, Sheriff of Upshur County, announcing an hourly wage increase of $1 per hour for Lisa Lipscomb, effective Sunday, November 1, 2015, from $10 per hour to $11 per hour. Three, correspondence from David Kaufman, Sheriff of Upshur County, announcing an hourly wage increase of $1 per hour for Laura Peg, effective Sunday, November 1, 2015, from $11.66 per hour to $12.66 per hour. Karen Wallace provided a review of West Virginia Code 7-7-7C, F7X7-17, and advised that no Commission action was required to approve the above pay wage increases, as the money for the pay raises was approved during budget sessions for the current fiscal year due to personnel changes. The sheriff has unused funds, which he is allowed to disperse at his discretion. Commissioner Brady expressed concerns about assigning unused revenues to purposes other than that what the funds were originally intended, other than what the funds were originally intended, and feels that the surplus should be left to roll into the next fiscal year. Five, Dominion Transmission Incorporated Project update, October 2015, Supply Header Project. Six, Dominion Transmission Incorporated Project update, October 2015, Atlantic Coast Pipeline. Seven, Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Adoption Financial Transaction, 9/1, 2015, through 9/30, 2015. Eight, James W. Curry Library Calendar Events, October 2015. Nine, Upshur County Family Resource Network Newsletter, October 2015. Ten, Agendas and our Notice of Meetings as listed, eleven meeting minutes as listed, twelve meetings as listed, thirteen appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Rick Edwards, City of Buchanan Mayor, expressed concerns about the Atlantic Coast Pipeline crossings of the Buchanan River and suggested that the Commission appoint an intervenor to represent Upshur County at various pipeline meetings and discussions. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following cost to attend meeting as listed. The Commission recessed at 10:50 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 6:00 p.m. in the Upshur County Courthouse Circuit courtroom for the joint meeting with the Buchanan City Council. And without further business, on motion by Terry Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission adjourned at 7:55 p.m.
Want some water?
No. Joint meeting of the Upshur County Commission and the Buchanan City Council, October 29, 2015. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, and the Buchanan City Council held a joint meeting at the Upshur County Circuit Courtroom on Thursday, October 29, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. There were present Troy Brady Commissioner, Terry Cutwright Commissioner, City Council members Mayor Rick Edwards, Mary Alba, Robin Ruth Simons, Ron Hugh, and David Thomas, and City Administrator Mike Doss, County Administrator Karen Wallace, Assistant County Administrator Tabitha Perry, and Jacqueline Deng Clark or Secretary. Mayor Edwards called the meeting to order. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. West Virginia Wesleyan Students from the Community and Long High Relations Committee of the Student Center presented a proposal for public transportation to service Buchanan and Upshur County with a focus on marketing and student transportation needs. The students anticipated that the proposal would not only service college students who do not have access to transportation, but would benefit the community at large. The students reviewed data and statistics concerning start-up maintenance and upkeep of a designated bus route and flexible service throughout Upshur County. The proposal was for two buses to operate 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily and weekends from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. City Council and Commission members commented that although they recognized a need for public transportation, county roads transit already services the county with designated and flexible transportation options, and the city and county both make financial contributions to the CRT. Karen Wallace advised the students to get in touch with CRT to explore internship possibilities. Commission and Council members commended the students for their community spirit and encouraged them to continue to remain active in community service. Mary Alba pointed to volunteer opportunities such as backpack programs in the schools. Mayor Edwards reviewed the discussion points from previous joint meeting in July concerning the joint hiring of a grant writer for the city and county. Terry Cutwright commented that Region 7 was available for grant writing, and even though the county already provides financial support for the agency, their services are seldom utilized. Shane Whitehair, Region 7 Planning and Development Council Executive Director, provided a review of the services the agency provides. Mr. Whitehair advised that Region 7 serves seven counties and has been instrumental in obtaining financial assistance for participating Counties for Need Project at no additional cost. If a grant is awarded, then the county would pay Region 7 to administer the grant. After review, the consensus of opinions was that the joint hiring of a full-time grant writer was impractical and not a good use of revenues. Michael Doss, City Administrator conceded that a full-time grant writer may not make sense at this time. However, advised that the city should still consider the option to use a grant writer on a contractual basis. Dave Thomas and Troy Brady commented on the decrease in the availability of grants and funding opportunities, and Mr. Thomas recognized that if citizens want services, they may have to pay more for them via increased taxes, levies, bonds, et cetera. Mayor Edwards provided a review of a proposal for the City of Buchanan to increase its support of the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. Mayor Edwards commended the facility's director, Jane Cochran, for her outstanding accomplishments in the operation of the facility. Ms. Cochran reported on some of the challenges that she faces due to inadequate space, small staff, shortages of medicine and/or food, and dealing with undereducated and irresponsible pet owners and adopters. Commissioners and Council members discussed expanding the space of the facility. The septic system is not sufficient to handle add-ons, and how the City of Buchanan could help to facilitate improvements. Karen Wallace advised that any financial donation would be welcome, but that adding another entity to the administration of the facility could cause some problems. Quote, "It is hard enough to get the two counties to agree on policy without adding a third entity," unquote. Mayor Edwards advised that the city would not be interested in becoming involved in administration. Ms. Wallace stated that the city would be recognized for its financial contribution. In addition, Mayor Edwards stated that the city might be able to help with personnel by assisting the animal control officer, perhaps with the addition of another officer. Dave Thomas stated that he doesn't have a problem with providing funding assistance. However, he expressed concerns about the personal responsibility of pet owners to follow the laws and to spay slash neuter their animals and suggested adding pet owner education to school curriculums. Meeting participants discussed increasing fees for dog licenses and possibly adding fees for licensing slash registering cats as well. Audience feedback acknowledged enforcement challenges. At 7:55 p.m., without further business, Mayor Edwards adjourned the meeting of the Buchanan City Council. Without further business, on motion by Terry Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the meeting of Upshur County Commission was adjourned.
Thank you, Jackie. I noted, I believe, circled it, and I can't seem to find it. Under item number 13 on the regular commission meeting, there was an S left off of Mayor Edwards' name, that reads Rick Edwards. It's a type of grass, very minimal typographical error. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes other than that previously noted?
On the same meeting, October 29, your regular meeting on the 3rd year, perhaps the word the can be admitted before Terry Cutwright.
Any additional observations? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Subway, checks.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, we have on our agenda a 9:15 meeting, which we already passed here. Patty Adams, presentation of World Pancreatic Cancer Day proclamation. Patty, if you'd like me to take the podium.
Thank you. Well, as you all have heard this before, but some of you may not have heard, I lost my nephew to pancreatic cancer in 2008 at the age of 48 years old. And so his sister, Annette Fettis Santelli, has worked hard to get the awareness out, and she recently won a national award in California for her efforts in her work, and that's a tremendous award, considering the whole world, the whole United States. Declaring November 13th, World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Upshur County, West Virginia. Whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,960 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 40,560 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits and just 7%, at just 7%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer presents itself, it is generally late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,197 residents of West Virginia will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in 2015, including 12 in Upshur County. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. Whereas there will be estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. Whereas the good health and well-being of residents of Upshur County are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, cause, and effective treatments, therefore being resolved that the Upshur County Commission designate November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Upshur County, West Virginia.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request for designating November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Upshur County? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Do you have the proclamation on hand? Bring it up.
I think Jim was one of the finest young men I ever knew.
And this is his mother, Margaret Fettig, in case you all don't know.
Would you like some photographs? I know that traditionally they do that. Continuing, at 9:30, we have our next appointment. David H. Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, will be requesting the employment of Seth Ryan Cutwright as a probationary deputy sheriff, effective November 15, 2015. The starting pay will be $17 per hour at my completion of the West Virginia State Police Academy. This will increase to $17.31 per hour. At 9:45, we have Tom Hayman, Tarrington Land's Club Representative, making a presentation on National Diabetes Month, Diabetes Month, excuse me, proclamation. Until that time, we have items for discussion, action, and approval. Item number one will be approval and signature of West Virginia Secretary of State FLIA Online Database Access Form, allowing County Administrator Carrie Ella Wallace and Assistant County Administrator Tabitha Perry to have access to the Freedom of Information Act online database created and maintained by the West Virginia Secretary of State. Do I have a motion to approve the signature, related approval of those forms to allow the administrator and assistant administrator access to that database?
Subway, second.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Sarah E. Miller, Justice Program Specialist for the Division of Justice and Community Services, regarding recent Victims of Crime Act grant award in the amount of $34,662. These funds will provide for a portion of the salary of a full-time victim advocate, which, as Laura Queen, I believe, works with the County Prosecutor's Office and the Upshur County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Be due and signature of contract agreement, resolution certifications, and supplemental special conditions. Is there a motion to authorize the President of the Commission to execute such a grant request or approval?
Subway.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next, we have approval and signature of letter to Paul Chapman regarding property located in Banks Tax District, Tax Map 7S, or is that 75?
7S.
7S. Trifocal sometimes, good things a little bit like. Parcel number 2.1. This letter informs the property owner that a member of the Upshur County Sheriff's Department will visit the property on or about the 15th day of each month and complete inspection report to ensure progress is being made at that property. Is there a motion to approve the signature on that letter to Mr. Chapman?
Subway, second.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign. And I want to thank Mr. Chapman for taking our safe sites or request seriously. Often many times, citizens who are communicating with concerning their property ignore or attempt to avoid taking responsibility under the statute. So we prefer that people negotiate and resolve these problems. And I thank Mr. Chapman for his attention to this matter. Next, we have you and a signature of verification of employer information provided by MZQ Consulting LLC that will be used to complete IRS Form 1094C and 1095C on the county's behalf. And those are forms that have to be filed with the criminal records to verify that employees are covered under our insurance plan, which is part of the Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare. So do I have authority, or is there a motion to approve or review and signature and verification of that information?
Subway.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have signature of correspondence from Epsom Incorporated regarding the payment of medical expenses incurred as a result of an incorrect schedule of benefits coverage dispersed by Epsom, plan year 2014. With a general knowledge, a general explanation because of the HIPAA concerns we have under the existing statutes, could you, Ms. Wallace, please? Ms. Wallace, can you please give an overview as to what's happening with this?
Yes. As the item states, an incorrect schedule of benefits coverage was dispersed to employees by the employer, which is the Commission, on July 1 of 2014. The same schedule of benefits coverage was dispersed July 1 of 15 for any new employees that came after that date. There is an employee on our plan that has a medical condition that the SBC stated was covered at 100%. They visited the doctor and were then billed for a portion of the medical expense that they incurred. That was incorrect because the plan SBC stated that it was covered at 100%. So since this time, you have signed amendments, number five and number one, about a month ago, to correct it for this plan year. However, some of the bills were incurred in June of the last plan year, and this letter will be advising Epsom that you agree to cover those costs as a result of distributing an incorrect SBC. We have contacted the payroll department, and we're advised that no other plan member or dependent had the same condition during last year's plan. And we have also clarified the same with Epsom, who is your healthcare provider.
Thank you. Okay, is there authority to allow the President of the Commission to attach a signature to the correspondence with Epsom?
Since we were in a row, I should move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We have a few minutes left. Next, we have correspondence from Seth R. Cutwright announcing his resignation as animal control officer, effective November 14, 2015. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
You may want to hold off on that until you get to, at 9:30.
Don't want to let anyone say a breach. We have correspondence from Steve Lingard, E911 Communication Center Director, requesting the promotion of Sandra Kate Bowman, a full-time telephone communicator at her current rate of pay, effective immediately. Is there a motion to approve that promotion?
Subway, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Amanda R. Ray announcing her resignation as part-time administrative assistant for the Mapping and Addressing Department, effective November 2nd, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that resignation?
Subway, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of advertisement for the part-time administrative assistant position in the Addressing and Mapping Department. Applications must be received on or before close of business on November 18, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that advertisement?
Subway, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, here we have about two minutes before our next appointment. For our information items, we have Upshur County Sheriff's reaction statement for period ending September 2015. We have Upshur County extension service November, December 2015, calendar of events. We have Upshur County Family Resource Network Newsletter for November 2015. We have the Cannon Upshur Chamber of Commerce Newsletter, November 2015. We have Upshur County E911 Communication Center Report, October 2015. We have agendas and notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes. We have minutes of the, oh, we have meetings, excuse me, meetings listed that the Commission and staff attend during the month of November. We have appointments needed for upcoming boards, and our next meeting will be November 12, 2015. It is now 9:30.
I'd like to have a motion before we move forward, that this dog breeding operations?
Correct.
I'd like to move the table out, go over it, move forward.
It's scheduled now, so you just need to remove it, make a motion to remove it from the agenda until it's ready to be processed.
Make a motion to move from the agenda.
Remember your original motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank goodness, because that was just kind of sitting there every week. I didn't even want to address it because there was nothing you could do with it. We now have 9:30, and we have appointment for David H. Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff.
Thank you, J.C.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Major. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
I guess I'm here this morning. I submitted a letter to County Administrator Kelly, Terry Wallace, two days ago, requesting allowing me to move forward to fill the deputy sheriff's open position. Soon after I did that, I was asked by the county administrator to come up to speak on that matter. So that's why I'm here today before you, gentlemen. But we know that Virgil Miller left a short time ago, which opened up a deputy sheriff's I wanted to move forward pretty much ASAP to fill this position. And the reason behind this is that the person that we have in mind to bring on board is a non-certified officer. We have Lieutenant Mark Davis, he's in charge of our training, and he has corresponded with the State Police Academy. And if we can move forward with this hire within the next week, then we've been promised a seat in the January 4th next class of West Virginia State Police Academy. If we don't get this person on board soon, then we have If we don't get this person on board soon, then we have to wait till the middle of March to get whoever the charles is portrayed. I think we all know, if we bring a probationary officer on board, it fills a position. But no disrespect to them, but they're really not a whole lot, they're not a great asset to the department for several months. On average, it takes nine months to get somebody hired, get them on board, get into the academy, then get to a point where we can actually send them, send them out of the road to be an asset to the people of Upshur County. As sheriff, I think it's important that we move forward and fill this position. You know, as sheriff, I have many awesome responsibilities to the people. And at the top of my list, I'm responsible to protect and serve all the people of Upshur County. And I'm also responsible for these gentlemen in back of the room to see that they have the resources they need so they can carry out their sworn duties. So I'm asking, I'm here before you today to ask you to grant me my wish, allow me to bring my choice of candidates on board. I believe this person is a, is a great person. He's worked for the county government. He's done an awesome job. We have interviewed by civil service guidelines. And so I'm sure you reviewed the letter, but it's my choice to bring Seth Ryan Cutright on board to be a member of our department. So I'm asking you to grant me this opportunity.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any observations, comments by commission members?
One question.
Yes, sir.
This was going to be on the agenda last week, and I was curious on whether you could justify the employment of Seth. He also works for the county now. He is doing an outstanding job, and I just wanted to make sure that we could justify filling that slot. And do we have the activity now to justify that with the cost to the taxpayers here in the county of probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars? And I know, y'all may, I seen Marion County this morning with a hiring freeze because we know that we have a shortfall coming. And I think the two commissioners know that we have a shortfall coming. Seth Cutright, from what I understand, is a fantastic person, doing an outstanding job at where he's at. I think your pick to put, bring him up, y'all may, and put him on the sheriff's department is a good idea. I think he would make a fine officer. The only thing I have in question is, can we justify it at this time, knowing there's a shortfall coming? And on this morning, in Marion County, they already had a hiring freeze, and I think they're ahead of the curve, and I don't want to be behind the curve. He is already employed by the county at this time.
Well, I'm not here asking the commission to give me an additional slot. I could understand, if I was standing before you this morning and was asking for additional manpower over and beyond what we've had for a long time, I could understand that we, that it would take a lot of discussion and probably headbutting to move either way. This is a slot that's been, been there for many years. It's been budgeted for many years. I'm not here to ask the commission for any additional money other than what's already appropriated in our budget. I've heard that there's concerns where the sheriff's department has not been able to furnish or provide 24-hour service to the people of Upshur County. Well, you know, there've been times in the last year and a half, if you would look at our positions that we have, total number of positions, you would look at that paperwork and you'd say, what's the problem, Sheriff? All your positions are full. Why can't you provide coverage to the people of Upshur County 24/7? But if you go back over that year and a half, you'll see that those positions may be full. But then most of that year and a half, you'll also see that at least one, and part of that year and a half, we had as many as two non-certified officers employed. A non-certified officer cannot basically, well, he cannot work by himself. He's, he's assigned to work with somebody. He's out there to learn. So yes, we have struggled covering the county 24/7. We also have to include our in-house service for all of our men being under service, and these guys are entitled to every day of vacation that's permitted under civil service. And my department's not young. I have several guys that's earned several weeks' vacation a year, and we have to give that time off to these gentlemen. So at times, we have struggled. But I can tell you, as sheriff and with 38 years law enforcement, I've never seen crime as, as bad as it is today. Now, to bring any numbers before you, gentlemen, I, I didn't, I did not do that today. But I think it's my responsibility, and I believe it's the responsibility of this commission to provide the people of Upshur County the resources that we can give them. They, you know, they, they pay their taxes. They deserve, they deserve the rights to be protected by law enforcement. And with the day and time we're living in, I understand that. I'm just lucky to have a young man here that's interested in coming to work for us with everything that's going on in this country. It's sad, the day and time we're living in. We cannot even get up in the morning and put our uniform on and come to work without that thought in the back of our mind with what's been occurring throughout our country. Our officers across our country are being assassinated for no good reason, just because they're wearing a uniform. So we need every resource that we possibly can get our hands on to, number one, to protect the people of Upshur County. But then, number two, so these people can have another set of eyes, another set of hands, another radio that somewhere down the road, that might, it might save somebody a life.
I, I think, well, we're pretty sure we're going to have a shortfall, but I'm not sure at the expense of the protection of the people that our law enforcement is the right place to make that cut. We've got a lot of other places we can cut before we cut and put citizens' safety in jeopardy. You know, our, our jobs to take care of the county business, the money, but first and foremost is protection of citizens.
And I understand your comment, Commissioner Cutright, and I know where you're coming from with this. And I don't know whether we're going to favor if we approve Seth for all the things that's going on today. Y'all may, I would not put on a uniform today in reference to coming out here and serve because you're a target. Everybody is looking for some reason to come up with something that you did wrong. You're under a microscope for every judgment that you make. The only thing I'm looking at as a commissioner, and we do need law enforcement, and I've been in law enforcement, and law enforcement does an outstanding job. But with that being said, I asked a week or so ago, when it was on last week's agenda, if we could justify the expense. I know that we have to do law enforcement and fund law enforcement. I know the sheriff has that in his budget. That's why it's always been a fluke for this year. But what happens next year, when we have a shortfall, and we don't have the money to fund the employees here, and hopefully it doesn't get that bad, because this county is in pretty good shape? Seth already has a job with the county doing an outstanding job. I mean, I wouldn't want his job now to bother being in uniform. But with that being said, y'all may, I've got to take that into consideration, y'all may.
If I may say one more thing, if this came to mind, you know. It just brought to my attention also the issue. And I think we have to bear the burden. But the West Virginia State Police here in Upshur County in the very near future, they're going to lose a man. They're going to lose a slot. The Sarkis have already been advised of that. So if they lose a man, and then this position is not approved, then this county's down two positions, not just one. Now, should I, you know, should we bear all that burden? Maybe not, but I still think the people of Upshur County deserve the opportunity. They have the right to be protected, and it's our duty to do our very best to furnish that resource to them. I'll shut.
Any further comments for the commissioner? I'll make a comment. I share with buddies concern because two years ago, we had a $400,000 shortfall. So no one who served the commission at that time is any more concerned about a shortfall than I am because of the effect that had on reduction of funds expended for our elected officials, funding that we could give to outside organizations, quality-of-life organizations that are very vital to many of the citizens in this community. But it goes down to what is the purpose, in my opinion, of government? There are many things government does that impacts the lives of its citizens, from the federal, state, and local level. But nothing is as important to provide the citizens and public safety, whether it be law enforcement, fire, or emergency services. That is why we have government to its earliest days, people banding together to protect themselves from hostile outside influences. Not everybody can have a fire department in their backyard. Not everybody can have a police officer stationed outside their house, or have a doctor or medic stationed in their living room in case of emergency. That is the basic, primary purpose of government, public safety. With that in mind, yes, we may have a shortfall this year. I agree. I do not believe at this point it will be as significant or severe as it was two years ago. And I am confident that the elected officials in this county, as they did two years ago, will be as responsible to our request for conservative approach to budget expenditures, which they were. I'm confident that we can do that again. I don't, don't know what those numbers will be, but I'm not concerned that they will impact on us as much as we had that impact two years ago. So bearing that in mind, if there are to be cuts, if there are to be reductions across the board or within select areas, I think we will be able to handle that. At the same time, with my belief that public safety is the primary purpose for government to exist or to provide for its, for its people, I would have to support the sheriff in the hiring of Mr. Cutright. That was a slot that was budgeted a couple of years ago, and it was after the retirement, if I recall correctly, if I'm not factually accurate, please let me know. But my recollection is that Mr. Virgil had retired, and this was the slot that was going to be filled, and then Virgil had a second thought about retiring, as many people in law enforcement career do. It's, it's not a career that's for everybody, but when you're in it, you've experienced it, most of us love it and miss it every day. And so he came forward with a recommendation that Virgil be rehired at a lower salary than when he left. So it was not a slot that was created for Virgil. It was a slot that basically existed in his absence, and he was re-brought back on board in that position. So the money was budgeted for that slot, and it's not a new position which is being created. And I agree with Mr. Cutright that public safety is important. It is the primary reason why we have government, to provide for those that can't care for themselves, that can't protect themselves. Thank goodness we have people that are willing to, to engage in professional law enforcement or firefighters, because if we didn't have those folks there, the philosopher from 1700s, Mr. Hobbes, made a comment that without order, without public safety, paraphrasing, and life would be short, brutish, and we don't want that for our society. So is there any additional comments on that?
I've got one, J.C., and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand the money's in that budget to fill that slot. What happens if the shortfall is made for next year? Do you look at an employee that has been served here for years and do away with that employee, or what are you going to do in that situation, sir? If I may ask, y'all may, I understand law enforcement is a vital part of Upshur County. But with that being said, it would be a period of weeks before Seth would be able to fill a seat in a cruiser and manned by himself. Would we not be ahead to wait a little while? And I understand when you do that, Seth could already have the training, and we may be meeting an opportunity. Wouldn't it be nice to know what the downfall's going to be before we put somebody in a slot? That's just my opinion.
That would be a perfect world if you could know everything before you do it.
But we know a shortfall is coming.
I still don't think we should put the public safety in jeopardy. I just don't, that's not our job.
And the reality is, the people of Upshur County, I'm not going to get on subplots, but the people of Upshur County elect their public officials, believing that those public officials will do this in the best interest of the county. And those decisions that have to be made sometimes are decisions which we might hesitate to make, wish to avoid. I think you've said many times, Betty, and I agree with you, that until you're elected to this position, you really don't know what it requires. And you've also said, to, you know, change, state it a different way, every decision we make, every Thursday when we make decisions, we disappoint someone.
That's not the way I stated it. It's more political correct than what I stated.
It's more, it can be more expressed in the public record, but that is true. The decisions we make affect people.
Oh, it is. It's a tough job to sit up here and make decisions, y'all may, based on what you think is best for all the citizens of Upshur County. But that's what I was elected to do, and that's what I try to do. Am I always right? No, I'm not. Have I made mistakes? Yes, I have, but I've always tried to do what I thought was right.
I would think that, and I agree with you, I know you're serious-minded about many things. But I also know that Mr. Cutright, Terry, are serious-minded about many things, and I'm equally serious about certain things and many things. On this issue presented to us today, in this moment of decision-making, with the facts that I know to exist in the past, the current situation in the county, I have to side with the sheriff and with Mr. Cutright when the vote comes. I respect your thoughts on this. I know that they're genuinely, sincerely thoughtful on your part, but I have to disagree with Mr. Cutright. I'll speak for him, but obviously, if he votes in favor of the sheriff's request, he would disagree with that position. So are there any additional comments, Mr. Cutright, in your part?
Sure.
Betty?
No.
Okay. Based on the request of Sheriff Kaufman to... Based on the request of Sheriff Kaufman to designate Seth Ryan Cutright as a probationary Deputy Sheriff effective November 15, 2015, with a starting salary of $17 per hour, and upon completion of the West Virginia State Police Academy, increase to $17.21 per hour. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Cutright's appointment as a probationary Deputy Sheriff? Is there a second? I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
You also have item number six. You have item number six.
Right, item number six. Or number...
Six.
It is number six. Okay, we have correspondence from Seth, our Cutright announcing his resignation as Animal Control Officer effective November 14, 2015. It'll take a second to confer or confirm what Buddy has stated. Seth, we've had nothing but positive comments concerning your contact, your work as a Animal Control Officer, been very impressive. I was, happened to be at the, I don't know if you recall or not, the one day you came and brought in a dog, I was there at the shelter visiting, and many positive comments were made by Jan Kalkbergers to your conduct and your dedication to the job. We'll miss you. But on your new endeavor, I wish you, and I know the commission wishes you the best because we want you to succeed and want you to serve the public for many years to come.
Thank you, sir. Matter of fact, I'll confer with J.C. I was at the dog pound there the other day. Jan said what a great job you was doing. Also, she stated it here, you are doing an outstanding job, and I think you will make a fine police officer. But I don't know whether you realize what you're really getting into when you put that uniform on, because it is nowhere near what it was 40 years ago when I wore the uniform. So good luck to you and your adventure, and be safe. And I just wanted you to know, it's nothing personal, y'all may. I just have to worry about the finances. And what happens if we're down several hundred thousand dollars next year and we can't maintain our employment? Where do we look at it? And I also understand Sheriff's point, y'all may, you need to fill the slot, it's got in its budget. Also, realize it'll be six months before you're able to put a uniform on, get in a cruiser, and hit the roads in Upshur County. But unlike J.C., I've heard nothing cause it. I wish you the best, good luck. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have, past 9:45, we have, is there anything additional, Sheriff?
Sir, I just want to thank you, Jimmy, your buddy.
Thank you, Sheriff.
May I have later some information for the resignation?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I regret it, but we did not act on it. Is there a motion to approve resignation of Seth?
Should we approve that? He's doing an outstanding job. Does that mean he could just kind of fill in there a little bit?
He can become the main officer of the Sheriff's Department. He could have two hats. Set a mood. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. So you're out of the job, Seth.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have, 9:45, we have John Hayman, Tenerton Lance Blud Representative, relevant to a presentation of National Diabetes Month proclamation. John? And we have Reverend McCutcheon, you all set? You're just, you're just moral support.
I have a funeral, so I don't have my blind wig on.
We need to come on up, Cal.
You can be an undercover wire today.
If you wish, you can come on up.
You can be an undercover wire.
You may not have it on, but I know who you are, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, gentlemen. Our club, at our last meeting, realized that November is Diabetes Awareness Month, and we made a motion to ask the commission to proclaim that as Upshur County National Diabetes Awareness Month in the month of November. And Governor McCutcheon and I are here representing our club. I'd like to read the proclamation from ahead. Whereas diabetes is a leading cause of blindness in the United States, almost half of the nation, 16 million people with diabetes, will develop diabetic eye disease, a leading cause of blindness. Whereas diabetics have a greater risk of developing diabetic retinopathy, the Tenerton Lance Blud is informing the public of this disease. Whereas research shows that the risk of blindness from diabetes can be reduced with early detection and treatment, and eye examination through dilated pupils is necessary to detect diabetic retinopathy. Whereas there is a compelling need to inform the public about the need for regular comprehensive eye examinations through dilated pupils to reduce the risk of blindness from diabetic retinopathy. In recognition of the importance of early detection and treatment for diabetic retinopathy, we, the elected members of the Upshur County Commission, do hereby proclaim November as National Diabetes Awareness Month. Finding and treating the disease early before it causes vision loss or blindness is the best way to control diabetic eye disease. So if you have diabetics or diabetes, make sure you get dilated eye examination at least once a year, and we ask that you make this proclamation.
Thank you. Reverend McCutcheon? Is there a motion to approve the request for declaring November Diabetes Awareness Month? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do you have the original?
I'd like to say one word.
Certainly. We are preaching, we're expecting to say something.
Never in my family had there been any diabetes. My brother became diabetic about four years ago. Of course, he's working at managing it, but it was a shock, you know, because I thought if you didn't have it in your family, you wouldn't get it. But he got at 65 years old. So it's something that I think people need to be aware of, and the increasing awareness. If we can help prevent blindness, that's our goal.
Thank you. And I recall, we have, the town is going to have some breakfast coming up this Saturday, okay?
We'll plug that, too. We do.
6:30 to 12:30, I don't know.
6:30 to 12:30.
There are good pancakes. There are very good pancakes.
And I will be there.
Good.
Do you all want to come up and get a picture or anything? And then go back to paying the bills.
I think we're back to paying the bills.
We do have a road name request application.
Oh, okay, where is that?
I have it here. It's been submitted by Jacob L. Brown on behalf of Sunny Buckland, which will be the new housing development.
Oh, okay. Crossburgers?
No.
Crossburgers, no?
This will be close to country, close to state. Sorry, not in Upshur.
Okay.
Their first choice is Elm Meadows Way, second is Deerwood Court Drive, and third is Whitetail Circle Street. There is a direct conflict with Whitetail Circle Street, which is their third choice. So you can choose between Elm Meadows Way, which is their first choice...
Elm, E-L-M?
Yes. And Deerwood Court Drive, which is their second choice.
Okay. First request being Elmwood Meadow Meadows?
Elm Meadows.
Elm Meadows.
Way.
Way. Is there a motion to approve the request for, the first request for Elm Meadows Way? Is there a motion to approve that name for the development?
It's Elm Meadows.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Now we'll base some votes.